We're good, okay. It being six thirty on Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, I would like to call, I'm sorry, Wednesday, it's Thursday up here.
Our agenda is wrong.
Sorry, sorry.
Reading the agenda.
Ten sixteen.
Yeah. So I'd like to call to order, it being six thirty, I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty four Planning and Zoning Historic Commission meeting. Franco, could you call the roll?
Yeah, the special meeting is today, apologies for that, Wednesday, October sixteenth. Commissioner Effek is absent. Commissioner Reyes Braher.
Here.
Commissioner Myers.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli is also absent. Commissioner Kruger.
Here.
Commissioner Stenick.
Here.
And Chair Brunner.
Here. Okay, with quorum made, we may proceed. So on to our first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as entered into the package.
I'll approve the minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second hand.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Reyes Braher.
Yes.
Commissioner Myers.
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger.
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick.
Yes.
And Chair Brunner.
Yes. Okay, any, any changes, any modifications you want for the minutes? Okay?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
Great.
Yep.
Commissioner Reyes Braher.
Yes.
Commissioner Myers.
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger.
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick.
Yes.
And Chair Brunner.
Yes. Okay, on to the next order of business, public comment. Is there anyone in the audience looking to make a comment on agenda or non-agenda items?
Come on, something.
Hearing none, we will move on to the first order of business, which will be a Historic District Guidelines presentation and discussion by Igor Dinox. So you can take it away.
Great, thank you Commissioner, Chair Brunner.
Yes, thank you.
And I appreciate you allowing me to go ahead of the other agenda items, I have childcare matters to take care of, and I'd rather my daughter not get home so late.
Yeah.
I greatly appreciate it. It's good to see you.
Likewise.
Yeah, we had, I just had a conversation with Commissioner Reyes.
I had this morning.
Yeah, this morning, so, good to see you.
Likewise.
But yeah, so this is our, I guess this is our third conversation, but second, at least in terms of going over the various issues that will be related to your Historic District Guidelines. So for tonight, I'll go through the outline again of what the district guidelines will include, go over the meeting schedule, and then we'll jump right into the general discussion for tonight. And tonight's focus will be, it's more administrative for tonight, and then starting next month, and after that, the meetings will get more knee-deep into more development and kind of physical aspects of your code, of the design guidelines. So in terms of the outline.
I'm sorry, I know you mentioned this before, but we have some commissioners that worked here last night. Can you just give us a rough explanation one more time of your process with them, and the processes with the board, and then approval of this?
Sure, I'll actually go through, so the meeting schedule, we'll give you a general sense. So last month, we did a high-level overview of what the intent of the Historic District Guidelines are going to cover, and then we actually started going into some of the key issues, not too knee-deep, that's actually what we're doing today in, in then November and December's meetings. And I'll actually show in a different slide. So this is actually all the different sections that are going to be in your code, or in your Historic District Guidelines. They may be reworded in some sense, or maybe be rearranged. For example, section eight, sometimes it's at the end, sometimes it makes more sense to be closer to the beginning, we can talk about that later, it's more latter stuff that we'll talk about later on in the process. But the reason why we want to have Historic District Guidelines for your community is because, not that you don't have guidance when you do look at applications for your Historic District, but when you don't have guidelines, when someone, when you need to recommend an application for approval or denial, if you don't have a full set of guidelines, you have less standing, so that if someone disagrees with your judgment one way or the other, they could argue against and appeal. But if you have stronger, a strong set of Historic District Guidelines, you actually have a stronger basis for all your decisions. So that's probably the main reason why you want to have, have it done. But again, these are the general conclusions. So today, you'll see outlined, we'll go over sections one and eight about general information and administrative items. And then in November, we'll cover, actually, I'll go on the next slide, November, we'll cover existing structures, new construction, demolition, that's sections two, three, and six. It kind of jumps around just because demolition, this might be another way where we actually might say, maybe demolition should be chapter four and not chapter six. But, so next month, we'll focus on more kind of the physical structures, physical elements of, of your sites, whether it's new, new buildings or existing buildings. And then section, or in December, we'll cover kind of more the, more detailed aspects of the Historic District Guidelines, such as signs, site and setting, that's stuff like fire escapes, doors, windows, and so on, and public improvements, so that's anything in the public right of way, so sidewalks, and so on. So, and we'll cover that. And then starting at the beginning of next year, we'll go through, what I'll do is take all, all the discussions that we'll go through today and through the next two months to the end of the, end of this calendar year, I'll take all of that and create a draft document for you all to react to, and then we'll present those in little chunks, starting in January. I do want to note that if, for some reason, our discussions in November and/or December kind of go over time, and we kind of feel like we have to use that January meeting just to kind of push some further discussion, because we're just so involved in the discussion, we definitely have that flexibility, and we won't affect the schedule, so, so we do have time. So is that?
That's great, that's a really good thing.
So how, how confident are you on the March twenty twenty five as being the time when we wrap this up? It says subject to change, I'm just.
Yeah, subject to change, I, I think, I mean, yeah, I always put that in just because it is always subject to change. But pretty confident, because by the, if we do keep to that, get over, get through all the discussions by the end of this calendar year, I can have a draft set of Historic District Guidelines for you all to review, probably ahead of the February meeting.
Okay, great.
And then you could probably review it in one meeting, sometimes you might want to, just if there's just a lot to cover. So that's why there's that kind of flexibility.
I, I ask, and it's just maybe something, I don't know if you've already considered, that we will be having an election in April.
In April.
And there could be new appointees.
Sure.
You know, it could be different people to work with.
And if you want, you can always call a special meeting to sit down and discuss this.
Yeah, so just to keep in mind, I think it'd be better to work through the, you know, all the way through the process of.
Yeah, just for reference, when I did this for the city of Aurora for their Historic District Guidelines last, it's actually a year ago, I actually met with their various committees two or three times a week in November and December, so I was traveling to Aurora quite a bit, I knew that route pretty well. So, so that, yeah, as Franco said, you can call special meetings.
Great, yeah.
They don't all have to be, like, if we have, like, a regular meeting, and we want to say, hey, let's meet next week as well, we can do that in person, or virtually, depending on all your availability, because you're all busy as well, so.
Right.
Yeah, good questions. So yeah, that's the general timeframe, any questions on this before I reach out into discussion?
No.
Okay, great. Again, so today's discussion will cover general information and administration. So in section one, on the right-hand side, you'll actually see the general contents that are generally part of this general information section. You have your purpose statement, set of goals of what, the goals of what historic, your Historic District should have, the history of the Historic District, or of East Dundee in general, and then that goes part and parcel with the character of the district, because your history builds your character. And then coordination with other plans, we're doing your strategic plan and your comprehensive plan. In addition to this process as well, so it's kind of a three-headed dragon right now, but that coordination will really be done well in terms of, everything will work together, so that rather than doing one in one year and doing another one five days, five years down the line, sometimes that coordination doesn't, doesn't mesh. So we want to make sure that's in their legal description. Generally, that's just if the map changes. So this is your current Historic District boundary map. The current legal description, I assume, wouldn't change unless we would probably want to get your village attorney to look at it, just, just to make sure that it's, that it's still accurate. Sometimes right-of-way language might change, it's something that I couldn't do because it's in legal terms, and I couldn't, it's really hard to decipher sometimes, so the only reason why it may change more, a little bit more drastically, is if we change the boundary. And we can actually talk about that right now. Do, do you right now feel any need to amend the boundary? That's either to take out certain properties, because you might say, like, oh, these two properties are too modern now, they don't fit the Historic District anymore, or you say, let's add this one other property in because we missed it, and it does have historic values, so.
So I would say, in removing, something to consider is that weird trapezoidy thing at the top. That used, that is like the parking lot behind our, you know, it's a parking lot primarily, and an undeveloped area. I think that was a very large lot when it was a lumber mill that burned down.
Oh, yeah.
So that was probably included at the time, but it burned to nothing, right? It's all gone. So, and that's behind our main square, so I don't even think people would necessarily see that, that spot. I mean, thoughts?
Or are you thinking, like, if there's new construction, do you build it according to Historical District Guidelines? Is that something that could happen?
If it's currently in the district, yes, you would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm thinking back there, since that's like just total green space and outside of.
It's just in the back. That could be an area that could be removed.
Yeah.
Would it be an area of future development?
That's the one reason why you would argue to keep it.
Yeah, but you may want to keep it.
Oh, keep it.
But would we want, I mean, would we force the developers to make it look historic?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
That, you know.
Yeah.
And there's a parking lot, right, like you said, behind that big, beautiful building, and I don't see.
I don't know, I, I think, you know, like, first, I think we have to identify what is East Dundee.
Yeah.
You know, and then bring those elements into the Historical District type of guidelines that we want. I think once we have that better definition, then we know how to go about it, because right now, they tore down those two buildings at seventy-two and the other street.
Yeah.
I lived on that street. So what's going to happen, right?
It looks beautiful, I think it's going to be open space, as far as I know.
Yeah, there's, the talk is to make it more, to improve that intersection.
Because now you can see, before it was really dangerous, right there.
Exactly.
Yeah, it was dangerous.
And increase the sidewalk size and all that type of stuff.
Yes, very nice.
What is, what is the plan for that, any?
I mean, there's a lot of things, I think, like, they talk a lot, you know, about, and it is impactful for this discussion that, you know, we have intersections here in the Historic District. And that, you know, right now, because they're in the Historic District, I think they would be harder to, to work with those, those businesses. But, you know, that Van Buren intersection is one that has potential to be a much higher flow, you know, improved intersection.
Right.
So having that, that, that corner cleaned up, we can make, you could add a turn lane, you know, you could do, like, a turn lane from seventy-two, for example, they could, you know, they could do.
Yeah, that's dangerous, that would be nice.
They could do some stuff there, and then get maybe people routed that way, like, maybe to the new parking garage. But, but right now, it's going to be green space until they figure out, I think, what they're going to do with it.
Wouldn't we want that in the Historic District?
I was thinking of that too, but then I also thought, the purpose of this is to preserve what we have.
Yeah.
So since there's nothing there, I don't know what we're preserving.
Yeah, it would be.
Well, that was my question, if you do new construction, do you follow guidelines to keep that type of characteristic?
Sure, yeah. To keep it aligned with the Historic District.
Yeah, and like what I said.
This is kind of the entry.
Like what I said, you know, what's East Dundee? We, we need to, as a committee, understand what elements or characteristics we want to introduce. That's what I mean by new construction.
Sure.
Yeah, 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 a hundred percent. I mean, I, you know, I agree with, with making everything in the district follow the, the guidelines when we build out new things. But yeah, I think, you know, with the, the growing of the, of the district as well, you know, like, if you did those two, you'd want to, would you want to include the school on the other side? I mean, the school's kind of a historic building.
It totally is, the church is totally, I mean, they're old.
Church is in.
Yeah.
The school isn't.
The church is right there, across the street.
Yeah.
I almost, I almost wonder if we need to, in our own time, just walk through and, like, figure it out ourselves too. Well, I'll do that for myself.
I was going to say, I lived through my life.
Yeah, you don't know, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, and we've got a lot of mix right now, you know, those, those.
Yes.
Those buildings on the south of seventy-two, just, just east of the river, a bunch of those are like fifties, nineteen fifties buildings, you know? So, I mean, do we?
What happens?
Yeah, do you want to tear those down and make them look old, like what they did in the twenties?
Not really.
I don't know, there was a building there, I'm sure, in the twenties.
I kind of would, but.
Could have been a log cabin.
I know you would.
Yeah, I mean, that goes to the conversation we had, I think, at our last meeting, where it's like, are you preserving for a certain decade? Or is it kind of whatever, whenever that time was built?
Yeah.
So I think it's more about respecting the time that it was built.
I mean, yeah, and to that point, I like that, maybe the concept of, you know, because, and I know Frank brought it up as well, we, we have a lot of mix, you know, the buildings were built, you know, over a wide range, we could say something like, we want to target the look of the village at a certain time.
Point, yes.
You know?
Yeah.
If you tear down something and build it back, it should look like it did in nineteen twenty. Well, you know, whatever we want to say.
Yeah.
You know, we have a lot of pictures of downtown.
Yes.
You know, where you can say, this is what this looked like then.
Where, where can we see those, like, at the Historic District?
I'll get you a book too, because, you know, Eliano, what's his name?
Philo Eliano.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he, I got a couple of his books.
Yeah, yeah.
I can lend you some of the books I have, he wrote about Dundee.
The best place I used to be able to go is Anvil Club and walk around.
Yeah.
Because I blew him up with.
A happy memory, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, so, cool.
Okay.
So yeah, so.
It's debatable, right?
So that's the concept, yeah.
Yeah, so if we want to go back, do you want to talk about then what we want the, the identity to be?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to define it as, you know, at least as a board, you know?
Yeah.
What is, what is East Dundee? What do we want it to be, you know, fifty years from now?
Yeah, well, do you want to go through everyone on the commission? Would that be helpful for you?
Yeah.
I think, so Connie, what, what do you think? What would you like the Historic?
I love my town, so.
Yeah, you've been here for, I don't know.
It's developed into a better place, for sure, and I think it's lovely. It's come a long way, baby, since when I started.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I like the atmosphere, it's very welcoming, everywhere I go.
So our standards for downtown, do we want it to, you know, to, do you have anything in particular?
I mean, I think, right now, that what they have right now is very, you know, I think more upscale than it was, what, thirty, forty years ago?
I was going to ask you, how was it fifty, forty, forty years ago? How was it?
It was just a bunch of bars and people walking around.
It hasn't changed.
Twenty years ago.
Yes, it has.
Twenty years ago.
A lot.
You know, before this thing burned down, and Meyer just was, like, had, you know, the, what the, Diamond Gyms had the sprit, split rail gravel lot in front of it, you know, it was.
It was the atmosphere, it was, it was no, like, guidelines.
Yeah, there was a big grain elevator in the depot.
Oh.
You know, that was sided with cement board.
Really?
I mean, yeah.
They have railroad tracks.
Yeah, so we don't want to keep that, and I mean, and like, I think we're going to be talking about destruction later on, but we have, like, you know, the barns, you know, the, the old coal stuff.
Mm.
Like, that's old, and that's been there since the eighteen hundreds, but we don't want to keep that, right? Because it's not useful.
I don't even know how it looks, no, I guess, can it be a piece of art? I don't know, where is it?
The big yellow barns downtown?
Oh, that one, they're going to tear that one down, right?
I thought they'd tear it down.
Yeah, but we'll have to go through our Historic Society for them to do it, because it's in the district.
Yeah, it was not, like.
And what would they build there? You know, how, what, think about like what?
It would be nice if they could replicate it, but I have been in there several times, and the construction, I'm surprised it has withstood all the wind, you know, because they're like two-by-fours, you know, and it's like, I know we're, we're going off topic, sorry.
That's okay.
But it, but it's a beautiful space, gorgeous, but it wouldn't, it would need to be sprinkled, it would need to be brought up to code, it would cost a lot of money, but I, I wish we could maintain it, but I just don't see how that could happen.
You could keep it, like that.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, be a, be a go-to bed space.
I thought the Rouse Center wanted that.
Yeah, well, that's, so, so that's going to be the thing, maybe that's a great way for you, you to think about it, is, let's say the Rouse Center wants to build something there, how would you want it to look?
Yeah.
You know?
Be great to see it.
You know, what, you know, would it, we don't want it to look like an avant-garde, you know, glass metal building, right?
Right, that's true, that's true.
A Frank Gehry building.
Yeah.
We don't want that here. I love Frank Gehry.
But you know, would we want to say, like, do we like the, the brick look, you know, of the main street? Is that the, the look that we want to say is the default? You know, we could, like, say, types of looks we think are appropriate when building new things.
Like a heavy timber, like, when I think of East Dundee, I think railroad, you know, that this was a destination, one of the lumber yards, and, you know, I just think of all the, like I said earlier, all the commerce, all the people, that nostalgia of, of just coming, pulling up to the train, and I'm sure it was chaotic and unorganized, but I'm sure it was beautiful too, like, but that's what I think of, as this train town of the late eighteen hundreds.
Yeah.
Yep.
Clapperton brick buildings.
Yeah, I mean, the main thing that for, and we'll probably cover this more next month, is about how do you do that using materials, using colors, and so on, because that's where, as a developer, as a builder, that's what's important in terms of learning, like, what can I build with? Can I build with stone? Can I build wood? What can my signs look like? That's what we'll get into in the next two months.
And one thing I noticed, looking at Street View, I was looking at Aliano's this morning when we were going over it, I zoomed into the cornice, the top cornice, the most beaut, I don't know if you guys have ever seen it, but it has, like, these lions at the top with this beautiful intricate tile, or maybe, it could have been a metal tin.
Yeah.
Gorgeous, and if that was lit, you know, I think.
That's an apartment up there.
I think that would be nice to do, but that's also funding, like, exterior lighting to, like, just make it.
Yeah, yeah.
And we'll cover that as well, probably next month.
But I'm sure, I'm sorry, we're getting off topic.
Yeah, that's okay.
Tom, how would you want input from the PCHC of which parcels should be included or should not be included?
I mean, that could be an exercise, if you want to do that independent of this meeting, and, and send me, like, a markup saying, like, like, if you printed out this map, and then just take a red marker, and say, include these three parcels, and then X out these two, or something like that. Because I think one thing that I want to do at these meetings is get kind of your general input.
Yeah.
Because I think when we, the time for, like, wordsmithing and, like, getting into, like, the nitty-gritty, I think that'll be more for, like, starting in January, when you actually have a thing to, to go for. So that might be a better use where.
Yeah, because I can see the north side of Barrington should probably be included between Third and the Historic District by the Fox River Trail, where they have the Spruce Hair Company and the Monteverde.
Yeah, those were bad buildings in the day, but they made them look like old buildings, so they're following it.
And I feel like we had two projects that came through us, and it was missed opportunities because we didn't have guidelines.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why we're here today.
Yeah, so would we say that the general, I think this is maybe a great question, is our goal to grow the Historic District over time?
Now, at what point do we say, hey, this structure was built before eighteen hundred?
Yeah.
You are in the Historic District, right?
Or give it timeframes, you know, like, eighteen hundred through nineteen forty.
Eighteen fifty to nineteen forty, right.
Nineteen forty, yeah.
Because we could start saying, we want our whole downtown to be that way, like, move it up to Van Buren, you know, so get that alley, you know, that's like where the ass throwing is.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, get anything that might be commercial down there, that could be our goal, you know, as a, as a village. Do we, do we want that, or do we want to focus on what we have right now and just make that really better? I mean, that's a big question, you know?
Yeah, it is, because there's garages back there, and I know somebody owns that one big garage next to the X place, and they're not going to do anything with it unless somebody else buys it, and they retire and they sell it.
Roger, kind of agree with that.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
And is there a difference between, would this be considered Historical District Boundary? Would there be a residential one?
We, we, well, we do have a policy to add to the, you can add.
Or just lump it all together, business and residential, okay.
There's some residential's.
Yeah, it's not currently.
There's some residential one there, okay.
Yeah, there is.
That's why I wanted to walk through it.
There, there is.
Okay.
I'm just thinking out loud, there's, there's stuff that should be in there that's not, you know, the, that old Hager Mansion on Hill Street, I used to go to the Hillside Mansion as a kid.
All that one's beautiful.
It's got that huge carriage house, I mean.
Yeah.
That's, that's a significant structure with this one here.
Well, and really, that whole road is full of old houses.
It is.
Still all the way up, is.
Mm-hmm.
And a bunch, I think a lot of these are.
I would like to include that.
Yeah, now, now the question is if we do that to residents, right, and I don't know if you know people who live, like, in Barrington or wherever.
I don't, but if I owned a house, the last I'd go to want is more restrictions on me to do what I want with it.
It'd be like, you can't, you have to put wood back.
That's why I was asking if there's a residential, historic one.
Not right now, it's all one.
Yeah, then you could sell that.
I wouldn't mind putting my house.
I rebuilt my windows, but not every year.
So what I'm hearing is that it looks like we, there's potential to expand the boundary.
Yeah, I think that's.
I don't think we're going to land on exactly what it's going to look like today, but maybe we can work.
But maybe then that's the, the, the general idea is we're not, we're not going to take things out. You know, if the goal is to grow, let's not talk about eliminating.
And maybe that's something I can work with Franco on and maybe come up with a map and maybe present it next month and something to react to.
I have a question. Do, to find out what years the houses were built, is that something you go into the city and just ask somebody?
I found it's not accurate.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
No, my house is wrong. I know I, I had a year and we pulled out a piece of wood that we signed by the building that's a different year. He said he was the builder, so I trust that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, my masonry work was done in 1835, I found out. Yeah.
Okay.
But you can do, you could do some things where, you know, you can see like when the lots were annexed. That's, that's usually a really good way to figure things out, you know? Unless you have a house that's so old it was built before or was actually plotted as a village.
Right.
Anyway. Steve, just anything quick you want to add in terms of village?
I think we got a good mix. Even the new buildings that we, that like were black and gray is, I mean, that really fits nice. And it looks, looks good day or night, that brick look. And then I think we got a good mix of, you know, variety down River Street, just to preserve what we have and maybe add to it.
Okay. Well, then anything you want to kind of like?
Yeah, what, what came to mind first was 1850 to 1940-ish. Like in that sort, that's the era that I believe Dundee is to me. Like you said, there's a, there's a depot that was highly used, the train tracks were being used, shuffling workers to and from Algen to Inverna. So that's, I think that would be the, the era that we're trying to preserve.
Okay, I like that.
Okay, great. Great. Thanks for your input on that. Just some other things to think about, where I covered the, the second point about the district boundary. Are there any notable new uses or improvements that have occurred in the last five, 10 years that should be, that I should know about in terms of, because that might affect, it could affect the boundary, it could affect some of the code standards. Like is, was there a new building that came in that was a bit too modern the way it looked or fit right in? So anything like that?
Well, I think, you know, the, the building that Steve just referenced, which is the one right here on Barrington with black and gray and Cobb's, that is a new building from our perspective and we, I think everyone thinks it fits quite well.
A little Spanish, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know the address on that? Is it, it's here on Barrington?
Barrington?
Three 11.
Three 11.
Three 11.
And they light up the building again, don't they?
They do. Yeah, yeah.
That looks real nice. I mean, even though that might not have been of the period, did they illuminate the outside of the building? But it does add to it. It looks real nice.
There's a lot of cities with beautiful architecture.
Yeah.
Ancient architecture.
Kind of lights, yeah. And the textures and yeah, that's.
Has anyone reused their building for anything like it was an old home, but then they, they use it for like a home office?
Yeah. So the building right here is that way, I think. So that to me comes across as a house right on the corner here, but it's a business now.
Okay.
Directly across the street from here.
Yeah.
But structurally, like if you were just to look at it, it still looks the way it was.
Yeah, it looks kind of like a house. That was a challenge we had during the, the, we had to do a certificate of appropriateness for it. They wanted to put an awning on it. And they're like, hey, we're a business. Other businesses in the historic district have an awning. And, but I'm like, but it also looks like a house, so it should, and before they had the awning, they had ripped off a porch that was like a house's porch. And we're like, oh, you should maybe have to put that porch back.
Put the porch back, but it didn't go that route.
Yeah, so we had, it was a challenge because do you, do you hold it to a residential standard or a business standard? Even though it's, looks like a house.
Yeah, exactly. And that, that touches upon a whole lot of things like parking, visitors, all that.
We also have the replica Lincoln Home House, the Heinz's, the Joe Heinz's office house. So it looks like a house, but it's a business.
Down the street from, um, Aliano's is a block down. Before you get to River Street, before you get to the parking lot that we're going to have, right there.
So that was designed to be an office, though. It's built like a house. It looks like a house from the outside, but it's always been an office.
Yeah, that's nice. Yeah, it is. It's cute.
Okay, good to know. Has the character of the district changed at all? And I guess since you all have known it?
I would say, yeah, from 20 years ago, it felt much more like, you know, rundown industrial. And now it's much more walkable and open, you know, like that central.
There are a lot more visitors.
Square, yeah, like we didn't have a meeting there before. You know, the depot building was there, but it just, you know, like I said, there's that gray elevator and just, you know, it wasn't built for congregating down there.
No, it's now, yeah, now we hang out. It's awesome.
Great.
Any other things that I, of note about the historic district, just generally, since this is kind of the more general?
I love that bike trail. I don't know how long that's been there.
Yeah.
Well, that was the train tracks before.
That's the train tracks I used to walk down them when I was a child.
Yeah, they pulled them out in the eighties.
In the eighties? Okay.
Yeah, early eighties.
Yeah, I loved, I loved that.
Yeah. So we do cover that type of aspect in the public improvements.
I would say one of the things that the village has been doing is they've been like lighting the trees in the historic district a lot and I think people like that in general.
Yeah, that's pretty.
To go along with the building lighting, I think light is, is, is a neat thing and something that I think people are really appreciating.
Yeah, and that's one thing that we did include in Aurora's historic district guidelines is because they do have, or most towns do have holiday lighting, but how does that fit into a historic district? You can do it tastefully, so.
So we do it now 365, right? You'll go out tonight and you'll see all the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah. But then, yeah, but yeah, so the, the standards will, will be do it tastefully, do it appropriately for the historic district. Whereas if you didn't have that, someone could just put an inflatable snowman and you'd be like, yeah.
Like I would like to get it to a point where people want to film movies here because it's so beautiful.
There you go.
Have they filmed movies here? Have they filmed movies here?
West Dundee did.
Well, they did.
Road and Perdition, Road and Perdition.
Road and Perdition, Town Hanks was a town.
That's West Dundee.
I know, but it's close to the house.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah, but you know, we'd be the Woodstock, get our groundhog date.
Yeah.
I learned something new today. All right. So I'm going to move on from this section, but we can always go back. So section eight, this is the administrative section. So on the right-hand side, the general contents is basically your role as a PCHC, what are your roles and responsibilities? Most of that is already spelled out and that'll just build into the, the new set of guidelines. Well, explain what a certificate of appropriateness is, what qualifies for it, acceptance and denials. And there's that, yeah, that little burp on the bottom just provides a general overview of what a COA is. And then just the administrative review process so that you as a PCHC, what are the steps that you go through to review an application? So that's going to be spelled out as well. That's already spelled out. We'll just build it in already. But some things to think about, have your roles changed over time? Like, do you review things now that you didn't five years ago?
We lost the sign thing. We don't get to approve the signs in the district anymore.
Who does that now? Is it the?
The, just the village president, the village administrator and the building inspector.
Okay.
Approve all the signs, just in the historic district.
Your recommendation is also welcome if that's what you see fit.
Okay. See.
I think it would be good if we were to do that.
Yeah, yeah. As in remember, it's when tequila valves went on, we didn't get to do their sign.
No, we didn't do it.
Yeah.
Any issues with issuing COAs in the, just send that, Marleyson?
One thing I would like to add about the process with these, I mean, we do have like a Dundee Historic Society here is, have you worked with any other villages that reference like an external group like that in a more formal way? Or is it just something that, you know, the group may do by, you know, you know, process?
Yeah, it's generally the latter. It's just by process, yeah. And then issues with the review process, that'd be the administrative review. Do you have applicants who say it's too cumbersome, it's too confusing?
Not really. You know, they're going to say that, you know, they have to look at quotes and stuff like that. I've only, I've only gone through two or three and not much feedback from them.
I mean, if anything, having a full set of design guidelines might actually help applicants rather than.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no guidance for them as an applicant when they're applying. So it's kind of open-ended, so that's why we hope the guidelines get better, guide them into how to apply.
I would say there's been a very wide range of what people thought was acceptable when doing, when applying.
And interpreted differently.
Yeah, when you don't have a, a set of design guidelines, it leaves it wide open for whatever people think.
Interpretation, yes, I saw that.
Any other administrative matters that we should think of? That signs, that one about signs is actually really good to know.
Signs and awnings, awnings as well?
Yeah, yeah. I think any, any.
Anything beyond the property line or, okay.
Well, I mean, an awning itself, the way I look at an awning is that would be structural, so that would still be. But then like how they, if they put words on the awning.
Or colors.
Yeah.
You know, that would be another thing, you know, like if we had set colors or.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I've seen like in, I've actually seen, you know, McDonald's compromise, like in Lenecque, they don't, they have their own little McDonald's logo down there. It doesn't look like a McDonald's. It has a brown McDonald's.
Sedona's McDonald's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sedona's McDonald's. Oh, beautiful. You can't even tell it's a McDonald's. It's all green, the M's green.
And that's the village made them do it.
Yeah.
There's another thought that I thought was interesting. Breckenridge, Colorado, if you're on the main strip there, you need to have three colors on your building. So the main, you know, your signing color and then intricate hand, you know, because it was an old mining town, so they have all that hand stuff. So there needs to be a minimum of three colors.
Right. Wow. Three colors, yeah, that's amazing.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll be to that extreme, but it'll be kind of nice. Colors from like old era.
Yeah, I mean, what you may have is like a palette of colors that they can choose from, whether they use two of them, four of them. Just make sure that the, if they do a combination of any of them, they're not garish, they're fine, acceptable.
Is there anything you've done with other villages to make it very clear to developers that if they're coming into the historic district, there are rules, you know, like don't even think about coming here if you don't want to adopt the, the rules?
Yeah. I generally think that should be expected, that if you're entering a historic district, that there are going to be more, the standards in a historic district are going to be a bit more strict or stringent than it would if you're just in the outskirts of town or some other non-historic area. To actually like have that, implant that expectation, I guess it's just say, hey, before you send your, your proposal, your application, be aware that we actually have these district guidelines. Give it to them and then they can mull it over.
I mean, I would, I would even say if you feel like this doesn't work for you, we have other places in town.
Yeah, exactly.
Like that's something we can maybe provide guidance for staff to steer them, you know? I don't want to turn away businesses from town.
Yeah, no.
But there's, can be right places, you know, more appropriate places for businesses.
Does anybody know if Crystal Lake has historical guidelines? If not, I could look it up. But I feel that we could, we're almost the same, you know, in terms of like the look and the stores compared to like Long Grove or like Lake Forest, you know, those type of.
You said Crystal Lake?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, and you're talking like in downtown by the train station.
Yeah, the train station.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, it's nice down there. I like that. I love it, but I think it is similar.
Yeah, it's very similar. I feel like it is.
Yeah. Yeah, and then they extend out to another part, I guess, you know, what, west of there where it's still like more retail? That's a little bit newer, but yeah, that downtown by the train station is very much like. They got a bowling alley.
Oh, I don't think I knew that.
Any other things either on administration or the other one, the general information? The first, these two sections are probably the more straightforward because a lot of it's already written out in many, in many ways. It's just kind of putting it all together in a more cohesive form. It's the, the next two meetings where we'll actually get more in-depth in terms of materials, buildings, colors and all that, so. So this is the non-exciting stuff, not so exciting stuff, but has to be in there. Other than that, oh, I guess that's it. So next step, so our next meeting, I think is still on November 7th. And so we'll be covering existing structures, that also includes any additions to existing structures, new construction and then demolition. So basically building type stuff, structures. That, yeah, should be more exciting stuff to talk about.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ted.
Yep.
Are we going to turn the lights back on?
Yeah. It's a good vibe right now.
It is.
Yeah.
Harsh of the vibe now.
Yeah, it's a vibe.
Thanks, Ken. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, moving on to our next item of new business, and this is going to be a public hearing for a text amendment to chapter 157 of the Village of East Dundee zoning ordinance in section 157 dot 003, rules and definitions to add data center. So could I have a motion to open the public hearing on said, or said text amendment?
We should open.
Second.
Commissioner Riz-Braher?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes. Okay, Franco, did we get any, any emails, any correspondence on this at all? Is there anyone in the audience who wants to talk about this? Okay, as the petitioner, Franco, could you say, give some background around the request?
Sure. So there's two public hearings tonight. One is for the definition and one is for the proposed text amendment for the allowable use table in the Ms. We took this data center definition from Elkhro Village, which has a few successful data centers in their town. And lately there's been interest of potential data centers in the Village of East Dundee. So to better position ourselves for future growth, it's, and to make it easier for a developer to navigate our zoning code, we recommend the village adopt the definition and the text amendment to better position itself in marketing.
Great. Yes, this is the future. Any questions for Franco?
Not yet.
Yeah?
We're just going to start to defy this data center and then they're going to move in, there, there's somebody interested in doing this data center.
Or are we putting a package for them?
I think we're preparing for them.
Oh, you are? Okay.
So what we're going to make is a definition and then we're going to say where it could be. So if there was a data center that wanted to be in one of those, I don't think it could just move on in, you know?
So I guess for me, obviously there would be a landscape requirement, right, in front? Or that, or is that something different?
So we're going to have to, I think separately, address what the building codes are for a data center. And there could be a bunch of things, like you're saying landscaping, size, the size.
The size, that was my next question, the size.
The parking, for example, as well, you know, a data center usually doesn't have a lot of people in it. It could be a big square footage without a lot of people, so you need, you know, so that would be something we'll have to address as a separate thing. But what we will be able to do with, this is the definition, so like, you know, when, when businesses come into town, we categorize them against this table and make sure that what they're doing fits with their zoning. So this is the definition that we're going to use to categorize those buildings. So if you feel like this doesn't describe what a data center will be, then we should change it right now. But yeah, we'll follow on like what the requirements for it are after that.
Got it, got it. Okay.
But it, it, you know, so if there are different things, if you want to think about size, I don't, I don't think we should put size in here because.
We don't know the length.
If the building code, they could say based on this size, you do this, then on this size you do that. You know, like we have in our building code, if you get to a certain size of retail, you need a loading dock. How many loading docks do you need? You know, all that stuff can be added.
Heights, I'm sure that's, that's something that would be in there, the heights.
Yeah, so for the definition, we just want to make sure we're clear what a data center is. And in the table for the permitted uses, it would be under the Ms. So the Ms. is the manufacturing district and they already have their general requirements such as floor area, height, width, setbacks.
So it would all be there?
Yeah, and you know, they're made, if a data center applies to be here and they want to be bigger than that, then they would just apply for variations.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So yeah, so the fact that they're, I mean, we're going to talk about that in the site of the next section. I want to make sure we don't, because there'll be a separate public hearing.
Overlap.
But okay, so any questions more for Franco on the definition?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
You second it.
Commissioner Riz?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. So to talk about this, I, I don't have any real issue with the definition, especially hearing that it comes from Elkhro Village. I think that's great that we took somebody else's thing. You know, I work, I go to these, I, I know I'm very familiar with, with data centers in general and this seems general enough that I think it's, it's in line with our other definitions. So I see no reason in, in, I see no reason in not approving it, so.
I agree. Okay.
I second, agree.
Okay, so let's say, I then entertain a motion to approve the recommend for approval of this text amendment to our village board.
I'd make a motion to recommend approval of a text amendment to chapter 157 of the Village of East Dundee zoning ordinance in section 157 point 003, rules and definition to add quote data center, end quote.
Fantastic.
I will second that.
Perfect. Commissioner Riz-Braher?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. Fantastic. So on to the second one, which we know is coming. Could I have a motion to open a public hearing to add a text amendment to allow data center as a P permitted by right in the M1 and M2 manufacturing districts as described in section 157, 065 A1 H1 of the zoning ordinance in the East Dundee, Illinois 60118?
I'll make a motion to open that.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Riz-Braher?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes. So again, Franco, did you hear anything from anybody, email, phone call, anything like that on this topic?
No.
Okay, anyone in the audience? Nope. Okay. And do you have anything addition, I, well, let's say it, I guess, again. Could you present your position on this, this amendment?
Sure. As part of the definition, the corresponding public hearing is to recommend adding this as a P permitted by right in the Ms., both M1 and M2. Although I acknowledge that M2 is only a couple parcels, we don't know what the future will hold on those two parcels. So to make it generally easy for developers and marketing purposes, and it fits the surrounding locations, we propose both M1 and M2 as permitted by rights in the allowable use tables for the manufacturing districts.
Checks out. So that, that means they don't need a special use, they can just come in?
Yeah, well, yeah. And chances are, though, they would, it would ask for variations because each one is going to be built differently.
Yeah. So I have, I have some questions that I'm going to have to ask of you in regards to viewing of the table and other zone, other, you know, other places where we might want this. Do you want me to do that here in the public hearing? I think it's actually better in the discussion?
Yeah, that's due.
Okay.
I would, it makes sense to discuss it. Close the public hearing since there's no one addressing it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I understand your point. I don't think we have any more.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to close the public discussion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Riz-Braher?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes. So the part that I'd like to add on this is, as I said, I've been to big data centers.
Of course.
And one, for example, was above a department store in the downtown Boston. This is pretty much Central Boston's point of presence for like Netflix and Comcast and everything. That's where they have their big network hub and it's in a retail building, right? So, so now I would say there's, so there's potential for something like that. There's also, I would say right now, we do have a data center in town already that meets this qualification and that's the AT&amp;T building.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
You know that, that, and that's zoned business.
Grandfather then.
But yeah, so, I mean, I don't, they don't build data centers like that anymore on a giant brick bomb shelters. But, you know, it, I think it can fit. So I mean, I'd be interested in a special use for certain, certain districts if it makes sense in, in the size. You know, like if it's, you know, two racks in a, you know, in a normal office building, it might work, like upstairs.
Like a mini data center.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Those are starting to come around potentially.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I don't think it should be permitted by right, but.
You're open to a special use in the certain Bs?
Yes. That, that's, that's what I, I think would like to discuss.
Actually, yeah, that makes sense and didn't even think about it that way.
Yeah, if to, you know, be part of the PCHC's motion.
Yeah.
To also include it in the, I would recommend the B3, which I'm about to pull up a zoning map for everyone to refresh our memories. I could do it on there if you want.
Yeah, okay. Do you think they can't do these data centers underground?
They can.
But everybody does the same thing, same color, same look. It looks like a prison.
Well, they're going to look like the cement. If you're building a new one, it's going to look like the cement warehouse buildings.
Yeah.
You know, like we got out there.
Yeah, I wish we could put vines on it and just hide it.
Get our, our council could put murals all over them.
Or murals, yes, yes. I would, I would like that. They could go away.
Yeah, the other idea, the other reason I do like the special use is once we, if we put that in there too, it maybe would make us look at adding a special use for another district. We just do it for one.